Good afternoon. It is one o'clock. We are going to get started. Going to ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilman Bowman.
Present.
Councilwoman Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Therby.
Present.
Vice Mayor Gray. Councilman Hobbs.
Present.
Present. And I would like to ask our city manager now to introduce our first agenda item. But let me note that these things right here are live microphones. And so in order not to create confusion for the folks who are recording, as well as for our clerk who will be transcribing, I asked if you would hold your sidebar conversations to a minimum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council members know, but just for the record and for the public who may join us in attendance, we are video recording this message, this meeting, even though we're not in our normal chambers. We've used the second meetings of the month, and we have second meetings of the month, to do deep dives in our strategic plan issues. And this month, we are featuring Living with Water. As I've mentioned to you in leading up to today, we'll go through a lot more content than you would normally get in your afternoon sessions. And that's intentionally so. We want to make sure you have a chance to explore any questions, any ideas, any thoughts that you have about this really critical topic. And so we structured the presentations such that there are several breaks in the presentation. We'll go through similar content material, pause, and we've provided what we hope you find to be provocative questions to stir your conversation. This is our only open session item today, so feel free to take as much or as little time as you want on the topic. But we hope that you will use this as an opportunity to really delve deeply into this really critical issue. Several of the team members will be supporting our work session today. But our lead presenter will be Carolyn Heaps, our Resiliency Officer. She's been with the city since August and has done a tremendous job with the city. And we're just so pleased to have her be part of our team. So I'll turn it over to Carolyn, unless Terry wanted to do some other introduction.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep it off real quick, Mary. Thank you. Good afternoon. As the city manager indicated, Carolyn and Scott, Scott is Scott Smith from our Public Works Department, is Smith from our Public Works Department, is one of our key members, core members of our Resilient Hampton team. And so they're going to do bulk of the presentation for you this morning, as that were. As the manager indicated, we have structured certain sort of discussion breaks in the presentation. So each time we get to that point in the presentation, I'm going to come up and try to facilitate the conversation. We, as was indicated, we have put forward to you in the presentations what we think are some thought-provoking questions. But certainly, this is your discussion, so if there are other questions or directions you want to go at that point in time relative to anything we've talked about, then certainly we're free, we're open and welcome to some questions or directions. Before we kick it off, I also want to recognize, I think most of the members, maybe Councilwoman Fair, because she's fairly new, but within our organization, the Resilient Hampton team is a interdepartmental interdisciplinary team in coordination to further priorities in the work, in your strategic priorities, as well as in the Resilient Hampton Initiative, which you all adopted. Many of those members are here in the audience today, sitting in the back. So I won't name off everybody, but I just wanted to recognize the other members of the Resilient Hampton team representing various departments that are largely responsible for our ability to kind of get this work done. So they're behind you. And if you have any tough questions for us that we can't answer, we may call on some of the team members in the back. So with that as a brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Terry. Good introduction. Just grab this clicker. So we're going to get started today with reviewing and grounding ourselves in the context of what this strategic priority is. So when we talk about living with water, what is it that we're talking about? And let's get in that kind of mindset. So the strategic priority language is on the screen, at the top of the screen here in the light blue. And I like to think about it, and we kind of talk about it on the team in two parts, both firstly, addressing the challenge of flooding, and secondly, treating water resources as the assets that they are for all the environmental, economic, and cultural benefits they bring to the city. Also on the screen here is our definition of resilience, which I think will be helpful to keep in mind as we move forward. Again, resilience is the bolstering of our inherent strengths in order to alleviate our stresses that are chronic, as well as enable recovery from extreme events in shops in ways that make the community even stronger than before. I want to emphasize that this is, our definition of resilience is really strength-based. We're looking at our assets, the same assets shown here in the circle, in order to alleviate our threats that we face. When we think about this in practice, we have a lot of different functions of our local government here to accomplish those two goals. So I wanted to show this slide to show the breadth of the work and what Terry was just saying about the fact that this is truly an interdepartmental effort and needs to be in order to accomplish what we're trying to achieve, that it includes not only things like shoreline protection, but also coastal placemaking, which, you know, spans from public works to economic development and all of the departments in between. All of these have a really important role to play in this work. So this is a quick org chart to show the basic structure of how we're organized with the resiliency work, with the Resilient Hampton Division at the center. And again, because these functions cut across every area of the city, so it does our team. I lead the Resilient Hampton Division at the center, but we are, we're also hiring for a resiliency specialist who's going to join the team and help advance this work, which is very exciting. And together, we'll have the role of coordinating and aligning and giving direction to all of this work that's happening in all of the other departments of the city. It's important that we have this because we can hear back from these departments, we can rely on those departments for their knowledge and expertise, and we can take that truly decentralized approach to integrate resilience into our work. I also want to acknowledge that the city can't do this alone. Our partners are also here on the screen because they play a really important role in disseminating and truly making the vision for resilience occur across the city. So it's not just something that the city can tackle on our own, and we haven't been doing it that way. We've been relying on support from our partners, many of which are listed here, to support our efforts. And tonight, before a city council meeting at 6:30, we'll be having a citizen spotlight event to recognize many of these partners who will be in attendance at the meeting to share our gratitude to them for their support. So as has already been said, we'll be breaking up this deep dive presentation into three separate sections with a pause at the end of each section to make it a little bit more interactive and digestible for you to, as we go through. So these are the three sections we'll go over. Firstly, the evolution, kind of the background and the history.
Excuse me. Just temporarily interrupt you.
Sure.
You made the comment that our citizen spotlight would be 6:30. For those who may be listening at home or watching at home, it is six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yes. Before 6:30, council, six o'clock. Thank you. So these are the three sections that we'll travel through today during this presentation, the history, as well as then, secondly, where we are today, our current landscape of projects and programs, and then lastly, where it is that we're headed into the future. And again, we'll have that opportunity for discussion and questions at the end of each section. We're really looking for council's feedback and direction in these areas and look forward to having a robust discussion. So let's get started with that background. The first slide I want to show in this section is to provide a little bit of context around getting into 2011, when we really kicked off our comprehensive waterways plan. And I wanted to highlight this because it shows that we had a series of pretty extreme weather events causing pretty extreme storm surge during, between 2003 and 2012. So between Hurricane Isabel in 2003 and Hurricane Sandy in 2012, there was this concentration of high-level storm surge that really helped motivate and encourage us to think about as a city, our approach to our waterways. So this is a quick timeline of some of the key milestones in this living with water area and our resiliency work, starting back in 2011 with a comprehensive waterways management plan. And then after that, moving forward to the Dutch Dialogues Virginia. So Dutch Dialogues was a five-day process. It was a workshop that we participated in with experts from the Netherlands, hence the Dutch Dialogues, as well as the New Orleans, a team from New Orleans, and others within the Hampton Roads region. And coming out of that Dutch Dialogues process, we really committed to thinking about the issues of sea level rise, the issues of resilience, and how to tackle them as a city, and made the commitment to move forward with all of the other plans and framework for resilience for our city that you see here on this slide. And we'll go through these in turn in the slides to come. At the same time, there was action at the state level, increasingly more movement towards understanding resiliency and approaching it as a holistic topic rather than through its individual lenses. So you can see this, the different milestones on the screen here. I want to highlight that at the beginning, in 2013, the first thing we have listed is that we were doing, that VIMS was doing a recurrent flooding study. So they weren't calling it sea level rise, it wasn't called resilience, it was really called recurrent flooding. And so we can see over time the evolution of how it was integrated into our comprehensive plans mandated for the Hampton Roads region, as well as established into various different state entities and positions that were created at the state level. So coming out of the Dutch Dialogues, I said that we made that commitment to resiliency and to thinking about these issues. And the first step that we took was creating the Living with Water framework, which was finished in 2017. And one key thing we did coming out of that planning process was to understand the context of the challenge of flooding. So what is the science around this? What are we experiencing with flooding? What does it look like for our community? This map shows an image of that, at the time, kind of the current picture of flooding in the city, showing in the blue color, the 100-year floodplain or the 1% annual flood risk areas. And then in the red colors, areas where we had experienced repetitive loss of properties that had been repetitively flooded. But we also knew that this, the current picture was going to change. That was one of the things we committed to, was understanding the change in coastal context with climate change impacting sea level rise. So I'm going to do very quickly an overview of climate change for those who may not, who may benefit, it might be reviewed for a lot of you. But essentially, we know that greenhouse gas emissions are driving higher average global temperatures around our planet. And as a result of that increasing amount of heat trapped in our atmosphere, we are seeing more volume of water in our ocean overall. So that's a result of both the fact that hotter water is bigger, it just takes up more space, and then, secondly, that we've seen land-based glacial ice melt, and it's now in our oceans when it wasn't before. So that is how we arrived at global sea level rise. Here at the local level, we experience what you see here, local relative sea level rise because our land is subsiding at the same time. So because the land is sinking here, combined with that increasing global sea levels, we have this phenomenon of higher local relative sea level rise than many other places in the United States. This chart shows the anticipated scenarios for how much sea level rise we can expect to see here. This is for the Sewell Point tide gauge in Norfolk, over the next century. So between 2000 and 2100, what are the scenarios we can see? And there are many, because we don't know exactly how this is going to play out. We don't know how quickly we're going to curb global emissions and address this challenge at the, really, the fundamental state of mitigating climate change. But we do know that scientific experts think that this intermediate-high scenario is the most likely scenario to occur. And this intermediate-high scenario would result in about three feet of sea level rise over 2,000 levels by 2060, more than four feet of sea level rise by 2080, and more than six feet by 2100. So what does that mean in practice? What does that look like? So this is the 2020 conditions, so as kind of a baseline, so you can see. I want to emphasize that not all of the areas that are colored in are areas that would be flooded every day or even every week. The lightest color here is the 0.2% or 500-year storm probable areas. And these maps are only showing coastal flooding, so it's only looking at the impacts of sea level rise versus maps that show stormwater from rainfall and other flooding issues. So this is 2020, and this is 2080. So again, this is based on the intermediate-high scenario that we just saw for climate change, which is somewhat uncertain. We don't know exactly how that'll play out with greenhouse gas emissions. And it also doesn't account for shoreline protection interventions such as road raising, for example. Those wouldn't, those aren't shown here, and if we took action, it would look differently. So I want to point out a few areas that are circled on the map here, so you can kind of understand what this would mean in reality. So Langley Air Force Base, a majority of that land area, based on this map, would be subject to a 50% chance of flooding in any given year. Similarly, downtown, where we are now, and City Hall, would have that same probability, 50% chance of flooding in any given year. And the same for Buckaroo Beach. Grandview, up the top there, would have the majority of its land area underwater at low tide. So it is extremely at risk and would experience some severe flooding. And then Fort Monroe also would be underwater at mean-high tide. I also want to point out Coliseum Central because it is another, you know, central focus of development in our city and has a lot of services and amenities, and it is less at risk. It would experience about a 1% or 0.2% annual flood risk for the majority of its land area. So when I was going, talking about climate change back at the beginning of these slides, I mentioned that it is, you know, resulting in global average temperatures, which creates sea level rise. But climate change also has a lot of other impacts. If you think about the wildfires out west, for example, and another one of its impacts is to result in wetter storm events. So we're seeing more frequent and heavier storm events impacting areas across the Commonwealth, including Hampton Roads. So this graph shows the anticipated changes in rainfall between the period 2050 to 2100. The estimates that we currently use are red. I know it's a little hard to see, but the main takeaway that I want you to take from this is that we can expect to see about a 20% increase in rainfall over the next 50 years. So we need to factor that into our planning as well. So I don't show you all of this to create any despair or say that this is hopeless. This is all information that we took away from our 2017 planning effort, and it's really why Resilient Hampton exists. This is, we're working to address this issue and to look forward to a future that is more resilient, to sea level rise, more resilient to the impacts of climate change. So we know that other countries, for example, the Netherlands, from who we learned a lot during the Dutch Dialogues and continue to learn from, have been finding ways to address this challenge of coastal flooding for decades. And we can continue to learn from their, from their efforts and the other cities' efforts, as well as to take action, innovative action that we have already been taking and we'll go through in the slides to come.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Going back to the previous slide, and this is one of the questions I had yesterday, but I didn't fully hear. What is the one that is nail-and-dot at lines represent the house or structure? Does that suggest that it previously was one of the two that are in that second grouping of redirect and store, and no longer exists?
So this is acknowledging the reality that in some cases, we may decide that some areas are not ideal for building houses into the future, that maybe we want to think about redirecting development to those areas that are less at risk based on this map. So the areas like Holland, etc., emphasizing development in different parts of the city based on what we know to be true about the impacts of sea level rise.
Okay. Thank you.
So that Living with Water framework that we completed in 2017 didn't just look at the science, it also set out guiding principles, values, and goals for our city for thinking about resilience and moving forward into the future. So these are our guiding principles. And again, our approach to resilience here is very strengths and asset-based. So when we talk about living with water, we don't mean dealing with it, we mean thriving with it. And I want to highlight on this slide really that it is a few, a few of the guiding principles, which include that we need to think about our multiple scales of implementation, that we need to think about partnerships with many different entities. Again, this isn't something that the city can do on our own. And lastly, that we should always strive to use the best available data. So here are values that I mentioned. And again, this is, this is really the how of what, what we're doing. How are we doing the work, and how can we do it in a way that embraces these values? So for example, this means that we need to integrate equity into our work by encouraging and enabling active participation in decision-making processes, and embrace our heritage by connecting our projects to the sense of place and history that exists in our city. So this slide shows our goals, and these, again, I think these align really well with the strategic priority area from council for Living with Water, and they reflect those values and guiding principles that I just reviewed. And these really continue to guide our work planning as we move forward each year, thinking about what are, what projects we're emphasizing and where we're focusing our efforts. So this is my last slide here on the Living with Water Plan, and I just wanted to bring this up because it is, it does outline some of the next steps that we came away from that plan with, including some that we have been advancing, and I'll talk through in the slides to come. Specifically, I want to emphasize that we came out of that plan with a commitment to doing a joint land use study addendum with Langley Air Force Base to address resiliency, and that we committed to doing further planning through watershed-level plans that would identify specific projects and opportunities at the watershed level that would really address those more granular challenges that we were seeing with flooding. So that joint land use study resiliency addendum was published in 2018, and it was an update to the 2010, excuse me, joint land use study, which integrated resilience and adaptation into our partnership with Langley. And the goal was to both maintain mission readiness while also improving the resiliency of both, both the city and the base. So we came out of this with 19 recommended strategies and a pretty specific implementation plan that we've been advancing over the past years. And we'll talk more about that later in the slide deck. We also advanced the New Market Creek pilot project. So we did that watershed-level area planning with guidance from council. We went to the New Market Creek watershed first and developed this water plan that was published in, it was completed in 2020. And this allowed us to identify some specific projects that you'll see on the slide here. So these are all the projects that came out of that plan. The three that you'll see highlighted are pilot projects, so Big Bethel Blue Way, Lake Hampton, and North Armistead were the three pilot projects that we identified. But there's projects ranging from at the parcel-level scale, so really individual parcel projects, up to the citywide and policy scale. So things like doing an evaluation tool to understand how we're making decisions at the city and aligning that with our resiliency work. Those three pilot projects were then financed with an innovative environmental impact bond that was issued in 2020, and it provided $12 million in financing for those three projects that I just discussed. It also committed to transparent outcome evaluation and disclosure on our goals, which were required to be beneficially, to the, beneficial to the community both environmentally and socially. So our goal that we outlined was to add 8.6 million gallons of stormwater storage capacity, and we're continuing to work towards that. We'll discuss that as we get into the details of those projects, about how we're accomplishing that and where we're at with that in our designs. So that concludes our first section of this presentation. Been through a lot of information, so I want to just highlight these three key takeaways that we hope you'll keep in mind as we go into the discussion. Firstly, we know that climate change is creating some extreme challenges for Hampton's future. However, through the Resilient Hampton Initiative, the city has been a dedicated innovator in anticipating and planning to adapt to climate change over the past decade. And then lastly, I want to emphasize that the state has increasingly stepped into a leadership role to help us address those flooding challenges, and we'll continue to see that as we move into the current landscape slides. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Terry, who's going to help facilitate the discussion around this question and others that you, that you have.
Thank you, Carolyn. So again, just to remind you, this has really taken a pause to kind of reflect back on the information that we provided to you. This part of the presentation was, as you can see, focused on what we have been doing and tried to present to council, kind of a quick review of all of the efforts, and to give each of you kind of a foundation upon which the discussion can go forward, and the additional sections of the presentation will then maybe have some greater context. As you can see from this, again, we mostly focused on looking backwards. So at least for us, the one question we wanted to pose to council and hopefully solicit your feedback is, many of you, not all of you, but have been here through a good chunk of the duration of this, this sort of history in the Resilient Hampton Initiative. We've made regular reports to you, but in the end, we, we've never really sort of taken a step back and asked you to kind of provide us within, as staff and the team, any feedback you have on, you know, how we've proceeded through the initiative, have we met your expectations? What do you think? Are there ideas about, you know, if we could have done it over, we would have done something different? So it's both sort of hearing what your thoughts are on the work that we've done so far, as well as just to get your impressions about, you know, always being sort of self-reflective on can we learn and get better going forward? So with that, I'll open the floor up. Carolyn is going, we're just going to capture, because, just so we want to remember that we're hearing things right, any sort of key points or questions that you may have. We will write those down and get those back to you if we can't provide an answer to you today. So with that, I will open the floor up.
Questions, observations? Vice Mayor.
So Terry, you know, a lot of the work that we, that we have done as a, as a city with the Resilient Hampton Plan is about controlling water and its impact on neighborhoods that already exist, and how do we lessen or decrease the impact on that? But, but looking at the slide that, I can't see the number, but it's the one on the inundation graduation through 2080, you know, where the mean-low water level is going to be much higher. I'm not sure, I mean, some of the work that we're doing, it doesn't seem that it's going to do a lot to be able to prevent that, because we're only talking about 60 years from now. A lot of the residential developments we have going in right now, people will, you know, still be living in those areas. So should, should then, we be looking at how to control, and I think Carolyn mentioned that, that perhaps we should look at doing more of our development in those areas that won't be impacted by that in the future? So.
Yeah, it's a really great question and an observation, and I would sort of parcel my answer into sort of two pieces. The first piece, and we get that question a lot when we show this map to neighborhoods and others. One is, we didn't get to this point overnight, and we're not going to get out of it overnight. So it's going to take a long concerted effort, and, you know, to you all's credit, to the manager's credit, you know, since the Dutch Dialogues, you know, around the region, Hampton has been recognized as a community that really is committed to figuring this out. So part one of that is, this is going to be a long haul. You know, we're, we're going to have to continue to focus on what we can do, you know, piece by piece, action by action. Some of it, as Carolyn referenced, is about physical changes, like we are doing with our pilot projects and some of our other projects. Some of it is going to be around individual citizen and business behavior. How do we conduct our normal lives to impact this? And some of it is going to be, and this is really, I think, if I'm hearing you correctly, really mostly to your question, is some of it's going to be about hard policy choices. Right now, in many of these vulnerable areas, we do allow development to occur. There's certainly going to be a day when that question comes to you as a council, as, and it's probably going to be as an outgrowth, and I'm guessing, because I don't know, but an outgrowth out of the conversations we have in the update to the community plan that we're now working on, is, is our current land use plan and our land use policies and other things, is that really the best direction, given that we now know and understand a great deal more about this? But not to belabor the point, those are very, very difficult decisions for you all on many fronts, because we're talking about private property and private property rights, and how do those rights, you know, weigh against the public good and so forth? So not easy conversations and discussion, but absolutely an astute observation that perhaps our historic land use policies are not, you know, all they should be when you layer it with this information.
Councilman Brown.
Yeah, Terry, just right along, the land use triggered a thought in terms of new construction, and those who are building new construction in the community, are we requiring builders to do something different in terms of, that will accommodate, you know, the increase of water flow, or like, you know, higher foundations?
Yes.
Ponds? I mean, what are some of the innovative things that we are thinking that builders should do now to meet?
So we're doing some things now, but maybe, again, another policy choice, I think, down the road is, are we doing all that we can or want to be? The things that we are doing now, several of which emanated out of the 2011 waterways work that we did, was previously council adopted what's called a three, three-foot freeboard requirement, which means that in the city of Hampton, if you're in the floodplain, then you are required to build your finished floor elevation three feet above what's considered the base flood elevation established by FEMA. So this, FEMA's base requirement is basically based on modeling of conditions now, so they would reflect Carolyn's map of here's where it is now. But communities like Hampton and Norfolk, for example, we are the two in the region that have the highest freeboard requirements decided, and it is your choice as a council to require them, because we know a house is going to be there for 50 or 100 years, that that extra freeboard or that extra three feet attempts to provide some cushion perhaps during the life of that structure. So that's one requirement. We, we also have relatively new and modern, more modern stormwater requirements about capturing water on your site, slowing it down before it enters into the main system. Some of the areas that we are currently working on, so I'm giving you a sneak peek of what we're working on back in the laboratory that sooner or later you're going to see, is really about, you know, what might be the new development standards in a resilient world? What are the things that we would do differently? You know, we are looking at maybe parking lots, for example, just to pick one you're familiar with. Maybe we're not thinking about parking lots in a really resilient way. We're thinking about developing standards for construction of homes and commercial businesses that maybe do a better job of capturing water, for example, and I'm just, I'm now just brainstorming with you, capturing water on roofs to store it and slow it down before it enters into the system versus trying, right, you know, historically, the philosophy is get the water off my property as fast as possible into the drainage system and then out to the creek. Well, that's not really a good idea anymore when our capacity to do that in the creek systems and the water's rising is really limited. So all of those things are things we're working on now, and you will see them in upcoming iterations of the work we do. And again, I don't say that, I say that knowing that many of those are going to be very, very difficult policy decisions to make because they do affect choice, they do affect personal property.
Yeah, just to follow, I read somewhere or heard somewhere, I thought that there were some incentives for builders who built according to the new specs and standards for resilience. Is there any incentive that you build up higher? Was there any incentive for the builder?
Yeah, so I think what you're probably referring to is Hampton is a community in the community rating system. So the more of these things we incorporate into our codes and ordinances, the benefit of that accrues to the homeowner and the fact that they get lower insurance rates.
That's what I heard. Okay, yeah, sure.
So the higher your rating, the lower your insurance rates are. So there is a financial benefit to the homeowner or the owner of the property. There's an initial cost, which is what the builders don't like, because they have to build a house or a structure a little higher. But in the end, the long term, you more than recapture that cost, if you think that structure's going to be there for 50 years, and the insurance rate savings that you get over that time. Not to mention, it helps us because, you know, we don't have to respond to a flooded structure, and we don't have to move people out of those things. So there's also a savings cost to us as the community.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two thoughts, well, one thought, one question. The thought is, I think we've seen these maps of what Hampton looked like, I'll say, 100 years ago, where we might can look back at where there might have been existing marshes, for example, that would have absorbed excess water coming in from storm events, and of course, sea level rise might not, the marshes, the old marshes might not have accommodated all of that, but certainly the fact that we don't have as much marsh as we used to, at least that's my impression, maybe is impacting these adverse effects. So I'm wondering if we are thinking about how we might be able to incorporate some of those naturalized areas into, that used to be, or create new ones for these areas where we're expecting the water to go, that maybe it could be, maybe it was originally a marsh. Be interesting to see. I suspect that some of these areas that are showing up as being flooded in the future may have been marshes already. So I think, I'm sure you all have that because I believe I've seen it before, but I'd like to see it again. And just, are you incorporating that past, if you will, that past naturalized environment that we had into our thinking about, you know, what worked maybe at one time? And then I'll follow up with my second question.
Yeah, we are absolutely doing that. One of the really, I think, cool things of working with Wagner &amp; Ball and their team, which is our consultant team from New Orleans and the Dutch, is when they look at an area, when we tell them, here's the study area, one of the first things they do is go back and map where the natural, their description is where the water naturally wants to go.
Right.
And so we get to see where all those either existing or previous streams were that were filled in and so forth, because that gives them a very quick understanding of, again, in their view is, where does the water naturally want to go? And we should sort of play off of that rather than maybe historically up to now, it's been, we decide where the water wants to go, and of course, the water doesn't like that, so eventually that ends up coming back and being a problem for us. We are looking at areas, again, I don't expect all of you to remember all of the details of, for example, the New Market Creek Water Plan, but much of, many of the recommendations in there are about understanding what New Market Creek was and how it served the city from a water management perspective, and to, again, as a policy decision that you all will ultimately see as a choice is, should we, if resources are available, should we be more actively trying, where possible, to restore those areas back to what they were, which was, this is the overflow area when the creek gets angry. That's how they describe it. When the creek gets angry, it overflows, and that used to be a natural storage area that didn't affect people's homes and businesses and so forth. So, you know, purchasing properties that become available that allow us to expand that natural footprint of the creek. Going back, one of the recommendations around Brights Creek and downtown, you know, that footprint has shrunk over time, is to, over time, go back and expand that and daylight that creek. So very much so, that is a option and a tool that we would want to use. It makes a lot of sense. You know, it's when you compare something like acquiring properties, and while there is some pain to that, compare that to building, you know, $500 million seawalls and things, and it's a more natural, green approach to managing the water.
And if I may, my second question relates to really our zoning, sort of our setback rules, development, our development codes. Are we looking at those and thinking about the fact that we're requiring certain amount of setbacks? So our density is, maybe what we're learning is that we need to concentrate our density maybe in the higher level, the higher land masses, and then maybe our current zoning ordinances don't promote that? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking if we're looking at that.
Yes, we are. And again, I think a lot of those kind of policy choices or directions, probably is the better term to use, or unless I miss my guess, I think are going to emanate out of the work we're going to do in the community plan, and then eventually come to you as choices of amendments to our zoning ordinance and so forth. But I know Bonnie's in the room. She and I have had multiple conversations about trying to really understand from a zoning legal power that the state has given us, how does that mesh with achieving some of these kind of goals? And as Carolyn pointed out on the slide about state involvement, when we first started this initiative, there was almost no reference in state-enabling code about resiliency, and that was a public objective and goal. That has gravitated slowly, more slowly than I want, but certainly the state has made progress in putting language into the state-enabling legislation that allows us to now do some things in the name of resiliency and flood protection and so forth that maybe we weren't before. So it's definitely going to necessitate and require us to look at our zoning code. And just to give you a concrete example that we talked about around New Market, in the New Market Creek Water Plan, currently in the New Market Creek Water Plan, there is an identified Corps of Engineers floodway. But that floodway, those floodway boundaries are based on a model of the here and now. They're not based on a model projecting six feet of sea level rise or so forth. So one of our really thoughts and questions that we've been knocking around is, do we have the legal authority to say, in Hampton, we're going to, from this point forward, create, and I'm just picking a number out of the air, so please don't, we know that if that six feet occurs, it's going to push the water boundary 50 feet or 100 feet beyond that floodway boundary. So can we now put something in place from a zoning perspective that prevents structures from going in, not only the floodway, which we have regulation now for, but also whatever that projection is that'll get us 100 years out? So those are the kinds of things, exactly to your point, that we are going to be thinking about. Obviously, our first step is to get the community and your endorsement as the legislative body on those policies within the community plan, and then from that, we then go and say, okay, to implement this, this goal, this is what we have to change in our code and ordinances. But we have already started, particularly within the context of the New Market Creek Plan, to sort of postulate what those might be.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Thank you, Mayor. Terry, I think you have some great plans with Blue Way, Raising Armstead, Hampton Lake, what you're going to do between City Hall and Minetti, and your future Buck Road, Phoebus Plans and what have you. I think they're great. And if I understand, I think this summer is when you start an initial phase of one of those. Is that correct?
Yeah, our...
July of 22?
We're, and Scott, I think, is going to cover those schedules, but just very quickly, we are getting close to trying to wrap up the actual design of those projects. So we're 90% plus finished with the design. So we're getting close to having them ready here in a few months to start going through the bid processes and things, but Scott will cover a lot of that since one of Scott's roles on the team is really to be kind of our principal project manager for construction.
Well, I don't want to get ahead of Scott, but in all of these, Terry, you know, trees and tree canopies are a part of this process, and you may have to lose some in front of your plants. And I assume that you're going to try to keep as many adult trees as you can, or you have a plan to replace those in the longer scheme of all of these components.
Yeah, one of the, I think, again, council members that have been on council, I'll know that Hampton and some of you and many of us have been up at the General Assembly for now four or five years running, actively lobbying for some more authority that recognizes the importance of retention of mature trees and tree canopy for a lot of reasons, not just water management, but the fact that mature trees, I mean, I'm going to test my memory here, so, you know, I think the number was that, you know, every mature tree sort of stores and absorbs about 1,500 gallons of water, you know, versus, you know, not being there. So you could, you know, if you can have a policy across the city that is, you know, pretty progressive about retaining mature trees and/or replacing those trees, then it not only is aesthetically pleasing, it adds value to property, but it also helps you with water management. So we are continuing with your support to go up there and make the case that, you know, it's not just trees for trees' sake. There are a lot of public good and public objectives in granting localities authority, greater authority to retain and require trees and tree canopy.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions on sort of where we've been up to this point? Are you medium happy, satisfied, whatever, on how we've been doing things? Because we really would like, you know, to kind of get that feedback, and that gives us a good quarter barometer in terms of going forward with what you're going to see coming up.
Yes, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to share my thanks and praise for the staff because when we compare ourselves to other municipalities, we are really advanced in moving the resiliency question to the front of the list. And through the support of council, we have been able to finance these projects and advance these projects. So I want to commend you all for, because it's a lot of work for the team, of course, added to your regular responsibilities, but we can see just from today's opening presentation how critical these issues are. And I'm very grateful to my brethren who, on this council, understand the importance of resiliency to Hampton and to our citizens. And we've heard much from citizens about their flooding concerns. So I thank you for being so responsive. I think we have been innovative, and I think we've been out front. And then I would add that I would like to go faster and do more and have more money and have more effort and have, you know, just even do more. So...
I appreciate that, and on behalf of the team, I will just say, from our perspective, it's, you know, we can't do it without you. And ever since the, certainly the public proclamations from the city manager at that time, and at that time, Mayor Wallace, I can tell you amongst our colleagues, the support that you all provide to us to be able to go do this work is really the envy of many of the jurisdictions. So I, it's, we're very thankful that you're that supportive and want us to move forward, so.
Councilman Hobbs?
Terry, I'd like to applaud you all for what you've done. You helped me understand again today what's going on, but I think the light went on for me when you had us, we were talking today about that exercise at Sandy Bottom, and it's, I understood what the problem was then, and I got it. So I think from where we started then, and I didn't, y'all were talking Greek to me. And then finally, the light went on, and now I see it. And now you've got me watching when I'm around the water, and I grew up here, so I was always in the water, but now I understand why things happened like they did, and some of the mistakes we made, and I like that we're taking the steps now to correct this. And I will probably not be around to see the completion of this, but my grandchildren will, and I appreciate that. So I think we're moving at a good speed, and I think you've got a darn good plan, just from what I know and what I've seen. So with just one councilman, I'm pleased. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, I will, I will admit personally that, you know, when we really started down this path, I mean, some of you remember that saying the word "climate change" was taboo at the beginning, when we first started this. You couldn't even say that in a public session of anything, because there was a, you know, a real debate, and I guess there still is in some corners, of whether the science involved is real or not. But, you know, again, to your all's credit, you sort of stepped out there when that was a controversial issue, you know, the manager and the council, and said, we're going to go forward, even while you all are over here arguing whether the data is, so, you know, my point in all that is, it's been a fast learning curve for us all, including us on staff. You know, 2015 wasn't that long ago, really, and to think that we were, you know, standing in a public building over in Norfolk for the very first time, really digging into this to now where we are is, I think, a testament to all of you all and the staff team. It's been a come a long way.
Yes, Councilman Ferbey?
Thank you. I want to offer my thank yous as well, but to not, I don't want to repeat anything that anyone else has said, but also what is very impressive about this activity and the methodology that you've used is the fact that you've included so many partners. And I can't say enough about the fact that you have, you know, university partners, you have, you know, our military, just the diversity of partnerships that we have. It goes back to what Councilwoman said... It does, it goes back to what Councilwoman said earlier in terms of the visibility that we have and the fact that we're, you're leaning in, and our city is leaning in and leaning forward. So I, I'd like to also, you know, I don't wanna lose that because I think it's very important in terms of our, of our brand and, and what we're doing for the greater, greater community, not just Hampton.
Well, thank you very much. I've maybe a little bit to spoil the evening tonight, but the, you know, when the manager and I first talked about this, you know, we internally recognized that none of what we've done would have been really possible at this, the where we are and at, at the speed that we've gotten there without all of those partners in various ways really, I mean, literally opening their arms and saying, tell us what you need, tell us what help you need. And, you know, we've, we, the city, have gotten, we're grateful for the recognition we've gotten for the good work that we've done. But behind the scenes, those partners have really been helping us get there. We could not have, you know, been in this position. So I think it's great that we get an opportunity to publicly to say, these are all the people that we're, the shoulders we're standing on to get, to get to this point and to, you know, to have this level of accomplishment. So, and for me, it's been a really cool experience to really build these relationships and partners with individuals and amazingly smart people in all of these organizations and students. So it's, it's been really a good, a good experience.
Oh, another one, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just thinking about what tools we have as we think about incentives. Councilwoman Brown was talking about what incentives are there already, and what came to my mind, which I really hadn't thought about before, but when you think about our tax code and how we tax property, are we thinking about how we might be able to have a land use category similar to, say, agricultural land use in some jurisdictions where there are special tax rates for agricultural land use, for example? And that incents those, those farmers to continue to be able to farm because they're not having to pay taxes on the development value of the property. And maybe that might be the same with some of this waterfront property that's so valuable in the development context. Have we thought about tax tools?
We have a little bit. Actually, the manager, some time ago, kind of challenged us to really sort of put that on our plate and try to look at it. I know, just to give you a couple of examples that we've started to think about, one is really related to the stormwater fee, because it is kind of directly related. So, you know, is there a way without damaging the fund and the ability to finance critical stormwater projects and so forth? Is there a way to incentivize that, the rate of that for, in other words, if you do better at making your property resilient, you get a lower rate if, if you, you know, if it's your choice and you wanna go do some things that are, are gonna, you know, run water off, then you have a much higher rate. So there's a, you know, is there a financial structure that maintains the fiscal, fiscal responsibility of the fund to do what it needs to do, but also incentivizes property owners to behave the right way? Because it is behavior that we're trying to change. So that's one example. The other one that I personally really intrigued about is, is transfer of development rights, you know, where if people decide it's too risky for me to live in that particular area, you know, could you take their, their inherent property rights and transfer to the, to another location that is maybe more practical for, and they can sell those rights to somebody, let's say, in the upland area to build something? So that's a tool that we know exists. How do you structure that is probably way more complicated than, than we've looked into yet. But just again, a couple of examples of, of trying to do something on the financial side or the property side to incentivize the right behavior.
Same as idea of having a wetlands bank, for example. That's another idea, using conservation easements as well. So I, I love all those tools.
And it, and it gets into your idea about, you know, maybe there are areas that need to be designated. This is where we wanna guide more dense development because we can't do it over here. So those transfer development rights, a developer could come in and, and say, to, say hypothetically, Councilwoman Brown is a property owner in one of those susceptible areas, the developer could come in and buy his development rights. And he gets the financial windfall from it. What we get is no building in a vulnerable area. What the developer gets is the ability to build more.
Right.
Just, just a moment. The, we've got two more segments to go. And what I'd like to do, if we can, is to, I know it's a deep dive, but allow them to continue, save your questions, and then we can either ask it after the next session, unless you think it really pertains to what they've done to get us to this point. Because otherwise, we will be here for a long, long time, and there's some like seventy-three slides to go through, and I haven't done a count. But I'd like them to go ahead and hit the second part of it. And then if, if your question, though, Councilman Brown, pertains to, oh, we got to this point...
I can wait.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you very much for your feedback. I'll turn it back over to Car, or is it Scott? Is it you?
All right. Let's move along. The next section we're gonna talk about is where we are today in our current resiliency landscape. So we'll talk about the ongoing projects here. So this is just a very quick update of that timeline of some of the things that we have ongoing, including that downtown Phoebus and Buck Row Water Plan and the Newmarket Creek Pilot Projects that we'll talk about, that we'll talk about in detail. Before we get to that, I do wanna talk a little bit more about the context of what's happening at the state and the national level around resiliency, because there has been a lot of movement, a lot has happened in the past couple of years especially, that's worth knowing and talking about a bit because it does inform what we're doing here locally. So in 2020, Virginia joined the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which provided a dedicated funding source for the statewide Community Flood Preparedness Fund, which is a statewide program to fund projects for flood mitigation. There were also two actions, regulatory in nature, to make Living Shorelines, a default approach to shoreline stabilization, as well as to change the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act to include adaptation to climate change. And then in December of last year, the first Coastal Resilience Master Plan was released here in Hampton, just down the street. So the main takeaways that I wanna share about the context of resiliency and what's happening at these different levels are here on the screen. Firstly, that there has been increasing recognition of climate change and its impacts, and that, as Terry was mentioning earlier, that this is a legitimate function of government to address them. There's been a focus on integrated approaches to resilience, and this is really embracing what we have been doing since the Dutch Dialogue. So as we've been talking about, we've really been a leader and an innovator in this space, and that's reflected in the fact that some of these approaches that are now being embraced at the state level and federal level are things that we've been doing in here in Hampton for a while. So things like addressing both water quantity, so flooding, and water quality together as integrated issues, addressing socioeconomic equity in our approach and our outcomes. And both the state and federal government have really recognized that vulnerabilities that an individual might experience, such as health vulnerabilities or economic, influence their ability to deal with flooding. So those people are affected differently than others. And so that has been incorporated into grant funding and funding sources through set-asides for communities that have higher levels of social vulnerability based on different indices that are established. And lastly, that both built and natural approaches are really important for addressing our challenges of flooding, that it's not just, let's build a flood wall and call it a day. They're, the natural environments that we've been talking about are really crucial for addressing these issues as well. And lastly, that there is increasing amounts of funding for resiliency through these various funds that we'll talk through in turn. So just quickly with the master plan, so again, this was released here in Hampton in December, and it identifies coastal risk and the impacts of climate change on these different areas of Virginia's coastline. It also goes through exemplary projects that are designed to, they're included because the state believes that they're things that we should be continuing and learning from into the future. Three of those projects are here in Hampton. And it also outlines next steps for state leadership, including future iterations of this plan. When we talk about water quality, we should recognize the Chesapeake Bay Program. So the Environmental Protection Agency established our total maximum daily load, our pollution diet for the Chesapeake Bay in 2010. And this has required Hampton to achieve these reduction levels in our pollution over, until 2030, so over the next, 2032, so over the next decade. So by 2032, we need to achieve a hundred percent of our pollution reduction goals. This is a costly endeavor, and that's in part why it's really important that we integrate it with our water quantity or flooding issues that we're also trying to address at the same time. So over the next decade, we're estimating that we should expect to spend about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars on improvements to our mandated improvements to water quality in the Chesapeake Bay. So let's talk a little bit about the funding and the various funding sources that have been made available. So this is the Community Flood Preparedness Fund that I mentioned previously. It's funded with the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, a portion of the proceeds. And a hundred and two, more than a hundred and two million dollars in funding was generated for this fund since March of 2021. Of that, thirty-two point three million has been awarded, and twenty-nine percent of that was awarded to the City of Hampton through seven different projects that were submitted to this fund. We also know, as council knows, that American Rescue Plan Act provided funding that was allocated for these different Living With Water and Resiliency projects at the value of twenty-five point seven million. And there's also the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is the one trillion dollar infrastructure bill that provides various sources of funding coming through the Army Corps, coming through the EPA and other sources, and includes thirteen point seven billion dollars in grants over the next five years for these different types of resilience projects. And this, this is for resilience, and also there's funding for roads, bridges, rail, and climate mitigation. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Scott to talk a little bit more about our projects. We're gonna talk through our approach to Living With Water, and we've kind of already talked about this graphic, but the integration of both this resiliency landscape and what our vision for the future looks like, as well as our stormwater management goals.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Scott Smith. I'm a senior civil engineer in Public Works. And as we go through looking to, for our projects that are underway, they're broken into three groups, the city, three levels, the city, neighborhood, and parcel level. So at the city level, again, that's some of the stuff Terry was talking about, the zoning, the evaluation tool, engagement plans. The neighborhood level are the actual projects that we're going through. And here, we have listed some of them, you can see the Big Bethel Blue Way, North Armstead, the work with the, with La Salle Avenue Corridor, and then the water plans. And then the parcel level projects, so Lake Hampton, the rain grant, and the Coliseum Lake weir replacement. And so the pilot projects that we had talked about, as you can see here, the Big Bethel Blue Way, North Armstead, road raising in Lake Hampton. And we'll start with Big Bethel Blue Way. So here, we're saying that the, the Big Bethel Blue Way, it was to increase storage volume within the system, connect residents with, provide connectivity between neighborhoods, and then create habitat and improve water quality. And we do this, we're gonna get eight point three acres of water storage, six thousand lineal feet of multi-use path, and native plant installation. This is an image of the existing Big Bethel, this canal north of Mercury Boulevard. You can see that there's a existing path that's used for maintenance when they clean the canal. And this is the proposed, and the significant features here is that this is the existing grade. We're gonna cut back the, the grade of the canal to create additional storage. We're creating a wetlands bench down at the bottom, so we're getting to the engineering with nature concept. We're trying to, as you'll see that theme coming through these different projects, that we're incorporating wetlands back into these projects. And this image shows where we're getting, where we're getting that additional storage by cutting back that bank. We're getting the storage, and when you think it, it doesn't look like much there, but as you start stretching it over the mile or so of the canal, it adds up to significant water, uh, storage. And the other areas where we're doing is we're adding three weir structures, and a weir is basically a dam across the waterway. This allows the regular flow to go through, but when we have a significant event, it'll backwater up behind it, creating storage, temporary storage behind the structure. And this particular image is at the Sunnyside, Sunnyside Drive, where we'll have a boardwalk that comes out over the canal to show how the, the stormwater system is working. So it'll be an educational component, that there'll be signage on there explaining how the system works. And then these are just some precedent images of types of weirs, that the Coliseum, the weir at Coliseum Lake, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit. So the North Armstead Avenue and Lake Hampton projects, it's gonna raise the road to seven and a half feet. So just a couple of weeks ago, North Armstead was closed due to flooding. This will correct that. We're gonna be getting eighteen point nine acre feet of storage here, and an acre foot of storage is, if you think of, if you can envision a football field, one foot deep, that's an acre foot of water. But when we do the eighteen point nine acre feet here, and the, the acre feet from the Big Bethel Blue Way, we had said for the EIB bonds that we had to get eight point three million gallons of water storage. We're getting nine point five out of these projects, nine point five million gallons of storage out of these projects. So we're exceeding the, the expectation that was set forth in the, in the bond. Again, at North Armstead and Lake Hampton, we're adding one point two five miles of sidewalks and trails, and adding wetlands and bird habitat. So the roadway, this image shows roadways at risk of flooding. And then the inset, it just shows the North Armstead, this is the Home Depot site, this is Lake Hampton. And where the flooding comes from in this particular project is tidal flooding that comes from Newmarket Creek and from Lake Hampton, across Lake Hampton, the embankment at Lake Hampton. It overtops that embankment and comes, so North Armstead is getting hit from both sides. And what we're proposing is to raise the embankment for the Lake Hampton project. It's raising the embankment of Lake Hampton to prevent that tidal overflow, and then raising of the road. This image shows for Lake Hampton that it's not just, right now, it's a, it's a stormwater lake. We're looking to make it a community amenity. So we're adding, we're adding additional bio-retention and storage up here, but we're also providing a trail around. There'll be boardwalks out over the lake, again, that Living With Water concept. We wanna bring the people to the water. There'll be wetland benches around the lake, and then down at the bottom, there's a wetland shelf area here. So again, that engineering with nature concept is, is weaved into all these projects. We've done, gone out, looked at the existing trees, see, to try to figure out how we can try to preserve as much trees on the site as possible, and there'll be additional planning as we move forward. This is the existing Lake Hampton, and then this is a concept of what the, that boardwalk will look like when it's complete. So some of the key impacts that, from the, the three pilot projects that we're going to have, approximately twenty thousand people will be benefiting from these projects. For North Armstead, that we had looked at, that right now, currently, North Armstead floods on average about ninety-two hours a year, so that will be reduced. And that impacts about forty-five thousand vehicles a year. So those impacts will be reduced, and then we'll be reducing stormwater runoff by about ten point two percent. So the question came up timelines for the projects. So for the Big Bethel Blue Way, we're finishing up the design now, and we hope to get it out to bid this spring, with construction starting this summer, and looking for a fall 2024 completion. Lake Hampton and North Armstead, Lake Hampton will follow the same timeline as the Big Bethel Blue Way. North Armstead is, is behind that. The Lake... The lake has to, there's work on the lake has to be done before the North Armstead project, so. But North Armstead, we expect by the spring of 2025 to, to be complete with construction. So we've done quite a bit of community outreach with these, with these projects, and that's a big part of the resiliency when we're thinking about resiliency. It is getting that community engagement in the process. Again, it's collaborative design, so not just only at the city level, but also with the residents. So for these three projects, 900 letters were sent out, we knocked on 100 doors, we had 30 hours of drop-in out, or that there were 30 visitors during the drop-in hours, and six public slide shows that we had. And the response we got, where people were in support of the efforts we were doing for flood mitigation, there was positive sentiment about the walk trails, there is some concern, is it going to create a nuisance? But interest in maintaining habitat and tree canopy, the increased water access, and the strong sense of community and desire to maintain it. So again, as we go through these projects, these are recurring themes that we're trying to keep in mind as we go forward. This project shows the Phoebus Waterfront Park, and the partnership for Phoebus did the first adopt a spot for beautification here. This fall, they planted a buffer out along the edge, and they're going to, they're going to do some shoreline, the living shoreline restoration in the spring. This is another Millpoint Living Shoreline, this is a project from Millpoint Park around the, to Lincoln Landing, in which we're looking to do a living shoreline project, 2,100 square, lineal foot of living shoreline, that will take the existing riprap to create the stone sill, add the stone backfill, create wetlands along that edge, a, a living image. So we discussed with the community association, the Millpoint Community Association last night, briefing them, we've received funding through the Community Flood Preparedness Fund for the initial design of this project, and we'll be getting, moving forward with that design. But again, this is that engineering with nature, we get a tremendous amount of water quality credit from this project. So again, this project will help us meet our TMDL goals, and we'd look to hope to have this as an example throughout the Hampton River watershed of other places where we can implement these type of projects. This is the Honor Park Resilience Park. In 2020, we were, Public Works was asked to try to find some additional stormwater storage in the downtown area. Honor Park was identified as a potential area for stormwater, stormwater facility. And what, it has multiple components, so we have a constructed wetland area here, this is a, an amphitheater structure, so this concrete structure here is actually an overflow, and will accept water from Lincoln Street. So it's designed to flood during a storm event, but when it's not flooded, it can be used for recreation. We maintain the existing Honor Park here. We've met with, last week, we met with some members of Military Affairs, and they're trying to see how we better utilize the space as far as, as an Honor Park, how we better emphasize that. We're going to get some additional planning and visioning on that. This area up to the north, up by Sim Street, this whole area is a bio retention facility with pervious pavers over top, and then what we call silva cells for the trees, to help the trees grow. So this, we, we look to be a very high-profile project, adjacent to City Hall, that really emphasizes the resilient efforts that we're doing while maintaining the integrity of the Honor Park that it was designed for.
Excuse me, before you continue. The, we were given a figure of 124 million dollars, I believe, of expenditure up to 2032 on stormwater projects to decrease our TMDL. Does that include also the cost of the resilient projects, such as the Big Bethel Blue Way, the raising of Armstead Avenue, as well as the, yeah, it escapes me.
No, so, so that 124 million is just to, to meet the water quality goals. Now, these projects all have water quality components, so they work toward meeting that goal, but when those numbers that were developed, that was just for the, the water quality itself. If, if we did nothing else, the benefit of resilience is, we're taking water quality, we're taking water storage, we're combining these into projects, and making community amenities, and enhancing neighborhood. So it's looking not just water quality, going and building ponds, that that was, you know, we, we've done studies when the TMDL first came out of how will we achieve it, we have different plans for it. Now we're looking to weave the resilience into it. Honor Park, Mill, Millpoint, Living Shoreline, weren't even conceived with, when the original, those original estimates are how we comply with the TMDL were, were developed. So we're now going, we're finding these new and innovative ways that are actually paying off, you know, we're getting a bigger bang for the buck for it, so.
So I guess, in my respect, I'm jumping ahead, but there's a $325 million price tag on these things, so that's including the 124 million that we're talking about for the, the stormwater management, that project, or those projects, and then the resilience project specifically that we're talking about.
Yeah, they mix, and I don't know what the exact mix is, but yeah, I mean, it, it's not, and it, it's not that one is included in the other.
It's not 100% additive, there's some.
Right.
Okay, so long and short of it, is there are many more costs for us to consider in the grand scheme of what we're proposing to do.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
But what we will try to do, I try to say the same thing Scott said in a, in a, in another way, the way I think about it, and if I get it wrong, please feel free to correct me, but when they did those TMDL estimates, it's before we had even started working on some of these initiatives. So some of these initiatives, like Honor Park, Resilience Park, had not been considered, but that will take care of some TDML requirements, so as we add that, we can subtract some, but it's not a perfect dollar-for-dollar substitution, because some of what you do here, like some of the amenity features, won't help you with TMDL, but some of the, the storage and, and filtering would. So it's not really A and B is completely additive, there's, there's some overlap in the cost.
Okay, all right.
And so what we, what we want to do is make sure that every dollar we spend on TMDL is also helping us with resilience at the same time, and we'll, we'll maximize that to the extent possible.
That's correct. And actually, the, because of the water quality goals, those requirements, that's, there's funding available to meet those goals that we're able to leverage for some of the resilience projects. So we're trying to leverage resources wherever we can to make, and I think that was part of Carolyn's initial thing, that TMDL is part of the whole that we're trying to address here, that we're not working in silos, we're, we're trying to address multiple, and that's one of the things with benefits is, of resilience is, is how do you get one plus one to equal three? And that's resilience that by, by breaking down those silos, we're able to accomplish multiple missions within one project.
It's very expensive, bottom line.
Yeah, the Coliseum Lake weir replacement, this is just an image of that, that currently, right now, there's nothing out. We just have this, this weir you can see from 64 as you drive by, you'll see the weir, and on high tide, you'll see the tide flowing into the lake. What this weir is proposing to do, this gate is close the lake off on a high tide event, and allow the lake, the storage in the lake to be available for rain events. So, and this was one of the projects that was featured in the coastal resiliency master plan. And then we have neighborhood drainage improvement projects, Aberdeen Gardens, Dunbar Gardens, the Phoebus, Shell Road, and Salters Creek. And again, these were identified as neighborhood drainage improvement projects, but we're applying that resilience lens when we go in and talk with the communities and try to figure out, can we do more? Is it just a, is it just upgrading a pipe, or is there more that we can do? Is there, is there tree planting? Is there, what else can we do as, as we do, do the, when we look at these communities, it's having the dialogue with the neighborhoods to make sure we're getting the total picture of what they want addressed, and not just, again, taking that engineering, I can go in and say, yes, I just have to increase this pipe, but is that really addressing the needs of the community? So we're looking, again, to, to address multiple concerns as we look at these projects, as we put that resilience lens on it. It's, you know, oftentimes, if we're going in and, and doing, ripping up the road to put in the storm drainage, can we add bio retention? Can we add, what else can we do to make it resilient?
Before we move that chart, I just want to add, you might say, well, why isn't blank neighborhood there, but, you know? These are the ones that we have already begun to do the work on, it's not to be an exclusive list. So for instance, you saw some previews around the La Salle corridor, and saw that some of that work would benefit Riverdale and Tide Mill and others, they're not on that list, but that doesn't mean we've forgotten about them, it's just some of that work is in further stages.
These are ones that are underway right now, so Friday, we're meeting with some of the leaders in Aberdeen Gardens to, to start, start that process, the Phoebus, Sherwood Avenue, Higia, the survey's underway, we're in the, the design, the hydraulics design now. So, and Salters Creek is, is under, underway also. So yes, we're, we're moving forward with these.
I just wanted to make sure.
It's not an exhaustive list, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure if anybody watched the presentation later, they might say, well, what about my neighborhood? I just wanted to get sort of on the record, these are the ones that are currently in the pipeline, and there are others that will be following those. And we understand that these are issues that impact many, if not all, of our neighborhoods, certainly more to, to deeper degrees, but we don't intend to forget about any neighborhood in our effort. It's just, we have to sequence things in an appropriate manner.
At this point, we're going to, I'll turn it back over to Carolyn, or Terry?
So to summarize, we're wrapping up our current landscape section, so I'm just going to summarize with these key takeaways, and then Terry's going to facilitate us through another discussion session. So here are the three things that we want to highlight are firstly, that there is more attention and more funding available for resiliency projects for cities from the state and federal level to address climate change adaptation and resilience than ever before. This is really a key opportunity that we have to take advantage of this attention and this funding that we, that we have coming. There's also increasing urgency around aligning our water quality and quantity efforts, and we just discussed that, that there's a high cost of both, and we need to find ways to address both together. And lastly, that our investment in resiliency as a city has established us as a leader and an innovator in this field. However, with these other two first things in mind, we are going to have some key challenges that we're going to face to maintain our space as an innovator and a leader, principally driven by the availability of funding and staff resources to manage those grants, to apply to those grants, and to do all of this increasing urgency of, of work. So with that, I will turn it over to Terry for the discussion.
So we've kind of spent the last few minutes kind of describing to you the projects that we have really in, in the works, so we want to focus your feedback, questions, and discussions around that. But just to kick us off, as you heard Carolyn say, you know, this is kind of a good news, bad news scenario for us. The good news is, we've done such a good job with this, that we're generally recognized as being a leader in the field and best practices. There are entities out there that want to give us money, which is great. There are entities out there who often demand, or not demand, ask for our time to share with them the work that we've done and how we do it. But all of those things require resources, it requires time, it requires funding, et cetera. So the question we really wanted to see if you had any thoughts on was, we've worked really hard to get to this point, but looking forward, literally, we're at capacity. You know, we've talked about it internally, even if we got more money, we'd probably take it, but some of these grant funds, for example, have time clocks on them, and you have to do the projects, and we're not sure from a, a staff capacity that we could handle anymore. And then to the mayor's question, you know, funding long-term is going to be a challenge. And so with that, we're interested in any general observations or thoughts you have on, you know, what we may, as a community, as an organization, do to address those challenges that maybe hopefully allow us to maintain that leadership role in, in the resiliency field? Because we, we as the staff team really see those as two, two very large challenges.
Let me start off, I think number three winds up being a budgeting question, and I think as a council, we recognize that there is a need for additional staffing throughout our city staff. And so I think one of the things that comes to my mind, and maybe other council members, would be a request from your department about the numbers of individuals you would need for that work.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, this was a question for the first session, but I, I think I kind of can integrate this with the mayor's comments too, because Councilman Ferbey talked about the partners that we have. I would like to see us continue to build on partner, but also reach into the local universities, and to see whether or not we can have interns from the colleges who have an affinity for this kind of work, and help us with some of the capacity, and do some of these maybe models and whatever, as a, as a class project. I think that would be great if we could do that. And the other question I had was for this gentleman here, was on the 92 hours that the North Armstead Avenue has flooded throughout the year, with the, you call it the big, what project, the Big Blue?
Bethel Blue Way.
Big Bethel Blue Way? With that project, would that reduce the number of hours that we see flooding on North Armstead Avenue, and by what percentage? Would you know?
So the Big Bethel Blue Way, well, the North Armstead Road Raising will.
Yes, the road.
It'll eliminate that.
Eliminate that?
Correct, because we're taking it up above that.
Okay, good.
So Scott is the really technical person on our team, so I have to ask questions like that of him, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but when I ask questions like that, the translation that sort of sinks in with me is that the project we're going to do there is essentially, as Scott said, going to eliminate almost all of the pretty frequent nuisance flooding that you see on that roadway. What it won't do is if we have a very hurricane or a large storm, there's, I think I've corrected, there still may be flooding across the road, but most of that that you see when you have nor'easters or storms or other events, this project is going to basically eliminate those and allow there to be free-flowing traffic on that, that stretch of road. Did I get that right?
Any other questions or comments, observations?
I will just respond real quickly, Mayor, to Councilman Brown's. We do, we do welcome interns, we have worked with, and again, you'll hear a little bit maybe about this, that we have worked with Hampton University, Old Dominion, and Virginia Tech have all, we've had collaborative projects with some of their classes and professors, and that has been helpful to us, hopefully it's been helpful to them. But again, one of the challenges, we would love to expand that, but I think, as you know, managing an intern takes time.
It does.
Somebody has to manage them, someone has to guide them, and, and, and that's a challenge for us to take on any more than we do right now. And so as this work expands, and as we would love to expand our relationships with our existing partners as well as other partners, we have limitations, because we, you know, we have work to do, we have a lot of it, and I can tell you that, you know, we have turned down, you know, offers to collaborate with, with certain entities to, to come and speak to them about projects and things, because we just have to manage our time.
Good.
But we would love to do it. We would, one of our values in our, our policy document that Carolyn went through was, we want to share, we want to share with other communities what we've learned, we want to pick their brain, but you got to have time to do it. but you got to have time to do it. Other thoughts, feedback on the existing projects we're working on?
Councilwoman Bowman?
Just a comment, Terry. Can you have a combination of in-house staff, temporary staff, local A&amp;E firms, interns, maybe some other possibilities, especially local firms, to get you at a staffing level to accomplish what you want to do? It could cost money.
Sure. We, yeah, we're open to any sort of combination of things. I mean, certainly, there's, there has to be, in my view, a critical mass of internal staff team that, you know, you know you can depend on, you know that are going to come ready to really focus on this, you know, most of their time. But yes, you know, we currently use outside consultants to help us design the projects. Although we're driving the concepts and all of that, Scott manages a lot of that. Obviously, we have consultants like Wagner and Ball who are helping us. So we can cobble resources together, but, you know, I think, and not to belabor this, but this is going to get to be really a bigger and bigger field. And as you've heard both Carolyn and Scott say, the resilience side of things is going to, if we're successful, is going to integrate into almost everything we do as a community. So it's just not going to be about flood projects. It's going to be, you know, are we, when we build new public buildings, are they resilient buildings? When we build parks, are they resilient parks? And schools, and roads, and parking lots, and all of those things, the question really going to be, you know, are we incorporating that resilience lens into those projects? Because that's what it's going to take to be able to handle the challenge that you see on these maps.
We're going to look here first and come that direction. Councilwoman Ferbey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those lines regarding university partners, are you seeing that the work that is being done is driving the curriculum for the local universities and community colleges?
Yeah, I don't profess to be an expert on that, but I know, you know, the examples that we've seen. So, the three that we've worked with most closely, Hampton University, Virginia Tech, and Old Dominion. Hampton University School of Architecture has a track in their design school around resiliency and how does that affect architecture and land planning and so forth. And so they are sort of taking up the charge, and they are using some of our real-life projects as their, you know, and we welcome their students and their innovation and ideas that they bring to us because they often make us think about something differently. Old Dominion has a whole separate center for coastal resiliency. So we have depended on them a lot for, and again, you're hearing things I was, I'm going to say tonight a little bit as we introduce them, but they have provided a lot of technical assistance to us in terms of just data and methodology and best practices. They have also been very instrumental in facilitating, having regional sort of knowledge-sharing opportunities with other regions in the country, like Charleston, South Carolina is probably the most prominent one that we've maintained a relationship with, about just sharing their thoughts and ideas, they're having similar problems. So why not pick each other's brain and form a relationship? Well, ODU's center through a C-grant allowed that sort of collaboration between us and other communities in Hampton Roads and the Charleston Resiliency Network to sort of get initiated, and we continue to have that relationship. Virginia Tech is also through their student projects have come down and looked at our, the areas that we have identified. You all are all well aware, Virginia Tech is opening a new research facility down on the waterfront, and I think we're very hopeful that some of their coastal resiliency and adaptation resources will be housed there either temporarily or maybe permanently. Because I do, they have, I think, communicated to the city manager and some of the city's staff who have talked to them that they would like to have a bigger presence in this field, and clearly, they recognize Hampton Roads is one of the, one of the most impacted areas, plus home to some of the best thinking around what we're doing. So, I think there's a lot more opportunities, you know, if we have the ability to do it. And I think they are really open and energetic about exploring those possibilities.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is similar to Councilwoman Ferbey, except that it relates to the business community. And so, is our position and our work so far helping us to, and driving economic development activity? I've always wanted to see Hampton as the center of thought on these resiliency matters, and just as well as we're doing, we're doing so well in our municipal space, the universities are doing well, what about the business community? What about these engineering solutions, manufacture of these, whatever they are, these underground storage things, and all these things that, they have to be made somewhere, they have to be designed somewhere, there has to be, there's business around that. And what would be wonderful is if we could encourage and attract those businesses and professional groups to locate in Hampton because they can walk right across from their office and go to the absolutely stunning Honor Park Resiliency Park and have their lunch, and see it right at work, and show projects that we're doing. So I hope that would be a way we could expand our reach and also expand our tax base and-
It's, that's a great, a really great, great direction. I would be 100% honest with the council, as I always try to be. We're probably not spending as many man-hours on that as I think we would love to. We have had some initial conversations with an organization that's centered over, a regional organization called Rise, whose, their mission is really to try to operationalize new technologies in the resiliency space. But certainly, I think there's, to Councilwoman Brown's thought and suggestion, there's probably a lot more we could do, probably, and Councilwoman Ferbey's here, probably with the EDA on this front, to kind of use the EDA as a vehicle to sort of push our agenda toward attracting green industry and technologies in the resiliency field. So I think that's a great suggestion, and I will certainly, certainly with the manager's help, but certainly will talk with our economic development director, and we'll try to, we'll try to figure out a strategy to push that agenda along perhaps faster.
Councilwoman Ferbey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll be brief. Also, I'm just wondering, from a manufacturing perspective, the community college angle. You know, just looking at the entire workforce development piece, and also, I thought you were going to head, Councilwoman Brown, around the project management- Yes. -and things like that. So there are other disciplines that might benefit from an internship standpoint. Y'all have done so much, you've done a great job of laying things out. I think maybe just a little bit more thought into how you can integrate interns in at the right level, where you have a 10-week timeframe, to work on something that would save money from having to hire a full-time person. So maybe some more thinking around how you can utilize interns to come right in and be prepared to take a niche and move something along that would save you a lot of money and a lot of man-hours.
Yeah, I really think that's a, those are great thoughts, and that's probably a good reminder or push for us to spend some more time there. I will share with you, and I hope the manager doesn't mind, she and I have brainstormed a lot of questions about really, you know, for example, could we start having students and so forth serve as interns? And would there be some way, assuming they performed well, that that's also a pipeline to filling vacant positions in these critical fields? So there's probably a lot of thought and work to put out, but some of these, for example, in colleges and universities, resiliency is a very popular sort of field to go into. And so there's a lot of, lot of different disciplines that touch it and are interested. So, you know, wonderful if we could host interns and then, you know, almost have a way that you can just integrate them into the full-time workforce kind of thing.
Vice Mayor Gray? Because I saw his hand first.
No worries. I am happy to hear from him.
Yeah, on Councilwoman Ferbey's question about the interns, you know, one of the regional workforce initiatives that is currently in place on the south side is 757 Campus. And I believe it's, what the plan is, is it's about talent retention in Hampton Roads region. And you create, or you get that talent retention by businesses providing the internships, and students begin to see the opportunities to work in this area, and then when they graduate, they stay in the area and fill the job. So that might be an opportunity for us, especially in an area where, Terry, you just said that there's a lot of interest, you know, amongst college students and, you know, degree-pursuing students in this whole resiliency field. So we may have an opportunity to do that. Now, I know one of the challenges with internships is managing the interns, and that probably goes to your staffing capacity and all of that. But again, Mary, that's where we, you know, as we begin to build capacity here, we have an opportunity, especially with Hampton University and their interest in being in that field, and being able to keep some of the students in our area.
I think we could even, just if I may, respond to the vice mayor quickly.
Well, I was going to respond to-
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. We had a conversation this past Monday with the mayors and chairs about retention and attraction. And we talked about utilizing interns to come into our different workforces and have an opportunity to experience and possibly, you know, when the vacancy creates, because we talk about attrition at every level, everybody has attrition, and allowing them perhaps to move into that position or a position within the organization. And when we went back, to go back to 2014, I think when we established the summer intern program, we actually created positions for, I think, for interns from area colleges. And the idea being, again, that once they get an opportunity to be in that area or within the, I guess, our work environment, that there might be an opportunity that would be created that would keep them in the area. And again, once they see there is a possibility of employment, then they will choose to stay and tell others about it. But that's a part of it.
Absolutely. Well, I was going to touch on some of what you said too, and then just adding, we have two opportunities too. You have the year-round kind of interns for the college students who are here in Hampton University, William &amp; Mary, ODU, CNU, et cetera. Norfolk State, didn't mean to lean anybody out. And then, but we also have the opportunity to bring summer interns too, and import talent and try to hook them on Hampton Roads and Hampton specifically. I do think, as the vice mayor mentioned, one of the barriers in the past has been just having the ability to supervise everyone and giving them meaningful work. And that's something we talked about Monday too, is the worst thing you want to do is hire an intern and then not allow them to meaningfully contribute, just sort of sit them in a corner, you know, kind of thing, then they don't get excited and want to contribute. So, as we build these funding scenarios for you, and you all know, I talked to you about the fact that we'd be having our budget workshop in February, it'll be important for us to think about not just the manpower physically, but also some of the supervisory capabilities so that we can build meaningful work for everyone. Another thing just to think about, we typically think about the city hall staff that we need, and we need more of that, to be clear. But many of these things, particularly the capital projects, we can accomplish two ways. We can add staff, which I know Public Works would love to have more staff than we can do in need, but we can also use project managers that are outsourced for projects. And it's good to do a balance of that because, now, this is going to be an area, for instance, where we'll have sustained work for a long time to come, but sometimes you just want to get someone for one particular project, and you can buy the expertise on that project short-term rather than investing in long-term staff. So I just want to encourage you to think about, there's multiple different ways to deal with the staff capacity. I'm really excited that you all embrace the notion of the interns because I do think that's part of building our workforce for the future. One of the things you'll hear when we do our February presentation is that the demographic trends are such that there's not as many people wanting to, that not as many people in the workplace, now that all the baby boomers are retiring, there are less millennials and I guess it's Generation Z that are coming behind them. Our birth rates in the country just haven't been as great. So when you have fewer people in the labor pool, you got to do more to attract them. And this intern idea, even pairing two interns to create one job, if you have, say, college students whose schedule allow them maybe to work two days a week, and you pair them up, and then you get closer to full-time work. So we're just going to have to be creative, and this is a really good area to invest that in.
And if I could just close, Mayor, with, you know, when we talk about being the leader, you know, we can be the leader because we are, you know, we have the projects and we have the plans for the future, but when we start talking about developing the next generation of planners and engineers and architects, they can cut their teeth right here on the projects in Hampton, and then they go off in, you know, other areas of the country where that talent is needed. But ideally, we want to keep them here, but yet some of them are going to also go elsewhere. So we have just another opportunity to put, to be the leader in this space.
I'm going to call myself one more time before we go to you, Councilwoman Brown. And that's that we have about 11 slides left, and I want to be a slide counter, but we have like 11 slides left, and if we can continue to roll, then we can get all the other questions in at the end, unless yours is a question right now that has to be asked.
I think so.
It has to be asked?
Yes, it's quick.
Go ahead.
It's quick. And it just piggybacks on what we've been talking about on the interns in the colleges, and that is, does our Hampton City Schools have a resiliency track in the academies? Because they have maritime, and they have what we've just been talking about last week-
They have environmental engineering.
Environmental. But wouldn't it be great if we could develop a resiliency track in our own Hampton City Schools? Study, you know, that they could package, I mean, just the regular math and science and project management, business, just all those things that would be engineering, the things that could be, that we're already teaching, but aligned in a way that would, again, build our own workforce.
Didn't you all do a project with the Kikatana environmental engineering kids?
We did.
I thought so.
Thank you.
Okay. Carolyn?
Last segment. Yes, we're nearing the end. As the mayor said, there's 11 slides left. So, we're going to talk about future directions, where we're headed with this work, some of our challenges, and some of this is stuff that we've been talking about during the discussion with you all right now. So I just want to start with giving you a quick update on the water planning process. So as I've been mentioning, we set out to commit to do a water plan, watershed-level plan for each of these different areas of the city that you see on the map here. The first one we did was New Market Creek, and that one is complete, and we're now implementing the projects out of that water plan. The next area we're moving to is downtown Phoebus and Buck Row, and we're in the very early stages of this planning process now. And I'll talk through some of the findings in the slides to come, but there are also additional areas that we'll need to cover in the city. Low-lying, harbor-facing, and southwest branch of Back River are the ones we have left to do, and so we'll need to come together with council to understand what are the priorities for which areas are being reached next and on what timeline. So these are some maps from our analysis that's been completed so far for that next water plan. This is really a different phase of work than the New Market Creek water plan in that we're moving to an area of the city that faces really different challenges than New Market Creek. We're also looking at areas that are really urban core areas, some of the oldest parts of the city, and so there's different challenges that we're going to face. There's also a lot of public land in this area which presents different challenges. So this, these maps show, in the blue, these are the 100-year floodplains of the current 1% annual flood risk extent, and then in the brownish tan color are high ground. For us in Hampton, high ground is 10 feet above sea level rise, sea level or higher. So you can see downtown Phoebus, and then this is the map for Buck Row. And some of the key findings that we've found so far are things you all already recognize that we know that flooding already creates significant impacts in these areas, and we know that sea level rise will expand the flood hazard areas in the next 60 years. In both downtown and Phoebus in particular, we have a lot of hard surfaces that don't allow for water to infiltrate into the ground, which creates challenges for our stormwater management, but also for how hot these areas get. Those areas- Those areas are just hotter than other areas that have greenery, that have vegetation. So that's another challenge we're thinking about. We know that there are a lot of older structures in these areas which can be more at risk because they weren't built with the same building codes that we have now when they were completed. Looking forward, this is the same list of projects that you saw earlier. It's highlighting a couple of different projects that we're kind of in the earlier stages on or in working on relaunching. So the evaluation tool, which will be a decision-making support tool for staff to analyze how projects that we're proposing are aligning with resiliency principles. And engagement plan to make sure we have a structure for reaching out to the public, the LaSalle Avenue Corridor Resiliency Plan, and then also our RAIN grant, which we are working on relaunching. So you all have heard about this LaSalle Avenue Corridor Resiliency Plan. This came out of the joint land use study with Lainey Air Force Base and was funded by a Department of Defense grant to complete a study that was finished in December. The goal here is to maintain access to Lainey Air Force Base via the LaSalle corridor that you see on the screen here. This is important because the gate currently serves about 35% of the base's traffic, which is expected to increase over time. And the resulting study recommends, actually 16, there's a typo here, 16 mitigation measures in six construction phases. We'll be starting community outreach to share the findings of this study in the next month. So these last three slides are our future directions and things that staff has been reflecting on, a lot of what you all have been bringing up and we've been discussing, things that we've been mulling over internally about where we're headed with this work. So firstly, we need to think about pacing our work to match with external factors. So addressing those regulatory requirements we've been talking about, specifically with the Chesapeake Bay and our TMDL pollution diet, as well as accelerating our work to take advantage of this funding and the attention that's being given to resiliency efforts. That includes completing grant applications, developing them, and managing them with the limited staff resources that we have on hand. Secondly, we see a need to expand the reach of our decentralized team and better integrate our resiliency values and principles into all of the relevant work of the city, including building better bridges between different departments and entities. So this includes things like broadly educating staff to understand climate change and how they and their roles can support our efforts to address it. Developing tools like the evaluation tool that I mentioned to support staff to make good decisions and identify trade-offs based on our resilience principles and also the realities of climate change and the data that we have on hand. And lastly, building bridges with entities like economic development, like schools, like the Hampton Redevelopment Housing Authority, and others to maximize opportunities for Lastly, we need to think about opportunities to share responsibility for resiliency with the community. As we've been saying since the beginning of this slide deck, this can't be something the city does alone. We really need to create a framework for whole-of-community resiliency action. So things under this area, we need to think about developing and dedicating resources to carry out that holistic engagement plan. We need to, as part of that, need to align our education and outreach efforts with other city outreach processes, including the community planning process. We need to operationalize a successful funding stream for individual resilience actions. So that's that RAIN grant, the Resilient and Innovative Neighbors Grant, and other incentives that we've been talking about for resiliency. And lastly, we need to ultimately arrive at a regulatory environment that is responsive to these challenges that we're talking about and also predictable for development, for developers and the economic community. So with that, we're at our last pause and reflect session here with key takeaways and questions. The three things to highlight from this section are firstly, that watershed-level resilience planning efforts are continuing throughout the city with downtown Phoebus and Buckrow, and those projects or those plans will identify some additional projects. Secondly, that SASS needs opportunity at the city-wide scale to institutionalize and disseminate the resiliency work more broadly. And lastly, that successful resiliency work will require collaboration with multiple partners, including increasing regional, state, and federal cooperation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Terry for our last set of discussion questions.
All right, well, just to wrap up, so our thoughts are, as we've sort of teed this up, as the future-looking piece of this, as we look to the future, just as we asked you in the beginning to kind of reflect and give us feedback on work that we've already done, we're asking you to share with us, do you think that as we move forward and start to plan for future resiliency efforts, are there any course corrections that you, as the council, would suggest that we look into? So that's sort of part A of the questions. If there are none, that's okay, but we wanted to at least see if you felt like that there were, you know, some course corrections or some directions that maybe we're missing that are important to the council. The economic development piece of this. So that's something we'll, certainly, as I said, I think we've recognized, we've sort of stuck our toe in there, but maybe we need to jump in. Really turning Hampton and helping the region become sort of the center for resiliency technology.
Councilwoman Ferbys?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And Terry, over from the previous workforce development discussion, I also would recommend that you look at other hiring authorities, you know, not necessarily outsourcing. Many organizations are using, utilizing, what, term hire. So in other words, if, you know, you have a project for a particular period of time-
Five years, three years, yes.
Just, you know, utilize that. And perhaps, because, you know, workforce doesn't typically work for 30 or 40 years anymore anyway. And so that can be, that can be attractive. And I just can't emphasize enough, when you really take the time to plan projects ahead of time, it really does, it is a return on investment when you, when you can have, you know, 10-week projects with a beginning and an end. Because these students do want to come in and side-by-side work with the engineers and the business folks and the project managers and not be in a corner. And I can, I'm sure with the amount of planning that I'm seeing that you're doing, that you could take time to find those opportunities. And I do recognize that you have to have, they have to have oversight.
Any other thoughts on, so secondly, as we've alluded to in the previous sections, Hampton, it's good for us, I mean Hampton is viewed as really a progressive, innovative leader in this field. You know, we do have some really good regional partners and, for example, City of Norfolk, City of Virginia Beach, City of Portsmouth, many of them are doing some really cool, innovative work as well. But as you all probably know better than most, resiliency and adaptation to climate change and some of the other risks that the region are regional issues. And in fact, so the question for us is, do you have any thoughts and ideas on how do we expand our reach and influence and impact on those parts of this equation that really are regional or state-level type issues? You all are the legislative body for the city of Hampton, but, you know, as you all know, we could do a really good job with flood mitigation measures in the city of Hampton and our surrounding neighbors will still be affected and the effectiveness of our solutions are somewhat dependent on them, so.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yeah, Terry, I think we need to continue to look at other funding in terms of approaching from a regional approach. Norfolk just got $250 million. I don't think they got it from the Corps of Engineers, they got it from somebody. What was it from there? Corps of Engineers? Where'd they get it from?
I'm sorry?
Norfolk got $250 million.
Right, so to get access to those larger federal funds, the core fund, the core vehicle we need is the three-by-three-by-three study? If that's what you were asking? It's hard to hear with the mask.
Yeah, I'm just telling, I'm just, I'm just saying that Norfolk got that, I'm sorry, Norfolk got $250 million. You talk about how we're gonna impact the region, we've got to build a coalition of regional supporters to, you know, General Assembly, whomever, to present our case for regional approach to mitigate flooding. So I would hope that we could work toward that in building a better relationship with our legislators and helping us push that agenda.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Y'all may be aware that Senator Lynn Lewis from the Eastern Shore has proposed legislation to establish a Virginia Flood Board. And that would be a regional cooperative group. And I think we would have representation on that. But that, that may be something that we can support up in Richmond. And I mean, no, I know we've already acted on our legislative agenda, but it may be something that we would want to participate in because it would give us the structure and presumably the budget. I don't know, sometimes money doesn't follow these things, as we know. But having that kind of a commission could give us a structure, a place to have a regional voice.
Yeah, offer, there's a, under the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, there's a regional coastal resilience subcommittee that has met, haven't met recently, but has been meeting probably quarterly going back about three years or so. And that recommendation for that flood control board came out of that. And that's one of the legislative priorities for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. So it really is supported by localities in the region. I think going back to what Councilwoman Brown said earlier, was actually, we were brought into the Dutch dialogues by Norfolk with that grant. And one of the things that we did, which I thought was big on us, was we brought Newport News in. Newport News doesn't necessarily have the same challenges, at least I don't believe they do, although they participate in the, the regional resilience subcommittee. I'm not sure if Pacosa does. But we talk a lot of strategies and for the most part, we come to the table presenting some of the things that we are involved in. But we recognize that actually this is more than just a regional problem in Hampton. There are other areas of the state that experience repetitive flooding that are at risk. And so what we're trying to say is, look, you know, we are really an economic driver for the state with our military bases and ports. So we need to make sure that we are taken care of, but in order to try and get this passed as a statewide concern, we're trying to show that there are other areas of the state that experience it. And so it's not just a Hampton Roads problem, but it's a state concern. But we are, we are supporting that.
Any other thought suggestions for us?
I just want to remind you all that some of the funding that the state has been putting into is at risk with the General Assembly session, with the governor withdrawing from the regional compact. One of the things that the, to build on what the mayor said about the regional legislative initiative, rather than getting into the politics of that particular decision, the board suggested that we all speak with, if you're not gonna stay in there and keep that revenue source, replace the revenue source. But there needs to be a revenue source. And that's another one we should all be tracking during part of this General Assembly session. And we've conveyed as such to Ed Reed, our lobbyist. But I wanted to keep that on your radar screen because a lot of the money we're talking about being potentially available at the state, its actual funding sources at risk right now. And that'll all be settled through the General Assembly and there's even a court action about whether the governor can do that on his own or not. Again, it's not really for us to get in the middle of all of that, but I raise it just to make you aware that we should be supporting a revenue source.
If there's no other comments, just on behalf of the staff team, I want to thank the council, having the opportunity to share this with you and get your really constructive feedback and suggestions is really helpful for us to, as we go forward and implement the strategic objectives that you have. So thank you very much for all your good ideas and suggestions and we look forward to working on these things with you.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for this wonderful presentation. And I know we're concluding, but I did have one thought that didn't fit into your last questions, but I would like to share it, which, when you were talking about the community engagement, it made me think of Peter Kagayama-
Kagayama?
Kagayama and the Love Your City, what we learned from him. And, you know, maybe we could have a resiliency day, you know, it could be Earth Day or it could be another day, but, you know, just a resiliency day where everybody in Hampton did some resiliency thing or became, became more educated, aware, joined together. Just seems like a good Love Your City thing to do.
Good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to you and your staff and your interdisciplinary team. All right. On any regional issues, is there any new business? I'd like to ask the clerk to read the motion required for a closed session, please.
Motion required is to convene a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.A, Point 1, and Point 8, to discuss appointments to the Virginia Air and Space Center Board and to consult with legal counsel employed by the city pertaining to city codes and zoning ordinances governing food trucks, and Governor's Executive Order 2, 2022, and Order of Public Health Emergency 1, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Ask for motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the motion, please? Thank you. Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferbys?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gray?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbs?
Aye.
Mayor Tuck?
Aye. It is approximately 3:06 and we're gonna reconvene at 3:20 here.